Now convene the study session for April 23rd. Hopefully, there's not a second for that motion. Right now, first item on our agenda for the study session is to hear a presentation, discuss and provide direction on the fiscal year 1516 budgets for a couple, three different departments, beginning with communications. Just for the public, we are, this is part of our budget review process, so at our council meetings, we're getting updates on the budget proposals from the various city departments. And we're doing this in stages, and today, we get to hear from three departments, communications, library, and fire and medical. So, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor Giles. Members of the council, good morning. I'm Randy Thompson, the communications administrator for the city. And we'll dive right in here with our 1516 budget presentation. First thing, looking back at FY 1415, some of our accomplishments, we went through the rebanding of our, or the process with Sprint Nextel to change the radio frequencies that we use in our network due to some interference that Nextel's old IDN network caused. Through that process, we were able to negotiate a buyout, essentially, of the contract and apply that towards an infrastructure upgrade. So that saved the city, or the members of the TOPAZ Regional Wireless Cooperative about $2.4 million. That leads us right into the next item, which was the life cycle upgrade for the infrastructure. Our infrastructure was at the end of its life cycle, needed to be upgraded. As part of the package that we put together when we did this, we included a network resiliency improvement so that if we were to have a catastrophe at the communications building, we would have a backup to be able to fall back on and continue with the system operating as it normally does. Putting this together as one package, we were able to get some savings from the vendor, Motor Oil Solutions, in that process. Another one of the projects that we have completed was the base station equipment up on our primary high-level site that covers the valley, up on Thompson Peak, northeast of Scottsdale. The Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian community wanted to use some space in the site that we've constructed jointly with Department of Public Safety. And we were able to negotiate for them to upgrade our equipment, which allowed the space for them to put their equipment in, at no cost, to the members of, again, of the TOPAZ Regional Wireless Cooperative, which was another savings of about $300,000. We've also been looking for some of the non-public safety departments, like transportation, for example, for a more cost-effective method for two-way radio communication than the TOPAZ network. The TOPAZ network, because of the way it's designed and the maintenance on it and so forth, and the technology that it uses, is frankly, pretty expensive to operate. So we looked for some ways that, as the radios that some of these non-public safety departments are using, they'd be able to replace them with something less expensive and still provide for their two-way radio communications needs. We were able to leverage a system that actually is used by Mesa Public Schools, and this will provide those departments with some communications, or with communications capabilities. And it's also going to help out Mesa Public Schools, because they have some coverage deficits in their existing system. So, we're going to add a radio site, network the two sites, and we both will be able to benefit from that. And we're in the middle of that pilot with, working with transportation right now. And some of the other departments, we've found, if they're operating in a campus or an indoor environment, that even radios based on Wi-Fi technology may fit the bill for them. And we've actually done a small pilot over at the IDEA Museum with those, and those look like they're going to fit the bill in some of these other instances. Looking forward to next fiscal year, one of the big projects we're going to have is the implementation and the commissioning of a hazard zone communication system for the fire department. I've got in parentheses there, the acronym VHF. What that stands for is very high frequency, and what that really refers to is the frequency band that's used by the radios that will communicate on those systems, around that system. The budget for that over the next three fiscal years is about $2.3 million to build that out. And that work, that construction and operation will start during the next fiscal year. We also, our model, our service model had been that our customers come to us at one of our two radio service shops, one over here on the west side of town and one at East Mesa Service Center. We realized, though, it's pretty expensive, for example, to have a crew bring a fire truck over and drop it off with us and so forth, so we said, well, why don't we go to where the trucks are? We got a van that was being decommissioned, outfitted it for radio service, and we've been going then to the fire stations or the police substations where the vehicles are. And it has worked out very well as far as being able to get people back in service, both fire vehicles and police vehicles back in service more quickly. We'll be finishing up the life cycle upgrade for the TOPAZ infrastructure. That equipment's actually all installed already. We're beginning the testing phase on bringing that equipment up, and we'll actually be putting it in operation at the end of August. That will then complete that rebanding item that I had on the very first slide. So we'll be switching our radio channels at that point in time. And then the resiliency enhancement will go into service about three weeks later, in mid-September. And we're going to continue with the non-public safety departments finding more cost-effective ways for them to use two-way radio. As far as our budgets go, the TOPAZ Regional Wireless Cooperative joint venture, of which Mace is the administrative manager, the TRWC board has approved the O&amp;M budget. And the capital budget that you see on the slide there, that includes the projects that I've already mentioned, the fire hazard zone communications, the life cycle upgrade and so forth. And then our department operational budget, we were able to take the reduction out of professional services where we would go, for example, contract for engineering services, where we didn't have either the expertise or the bandwidth to handle those things in-house. And the impact is going to be that if we've got any unforecast projects that come in, those may get delayed until we're able to free up somebody, rather than being able to go out necessarily and contract with somebody to get some of that done. So, that is the completion of my presentation for you. Are there any questions?
When you say that there could be some slow engineering tasks and projects, just the non-forecast projects, are those non-forecast projects of yours, or are those could be from other departments?
They're typically for our other departments. We've attempted to make sure we have a plan for the projects that we have, and certainly, if a higher priority project were to come in, we can bump down something that we may have in the works. But we don't always get a good forecast of something that might be coming up. Some of them kind of come up without a lot of warning. And some of them can be, they can seem very simple on the surface, but there's a lot underneath. And those would be the kind of things that we'd have to either try to juggle or delay a little bit. We try to respond to all those very quickly, but there may be a little bit of a delay.
Okay. And you'll work with Beth on those?
Well, actually, most of them come from our clients like police and fire, and some of the other municipal departments that use two-way radio.
Thank you, Mr. Luna.
I appreciate the collaboration you're working with Mesa Public Schools and the Salt River Pima Reservation in terms of enhancing your communication ability. So, kudos to you, and I just wanted to comment on that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
The next department on the agenda is library. Invite our head librarian, Heather.
My name is Heather Wolf, and I'm the library director. This is Don Kusarak, our management assistant too, and we're here to talk about the library and our accomplishments for fiscal year 1415 and looking forward to 1516. Every year, I like to take this opportunity to show you all how busy our libraries are. Programming is one area in which we've really concentrated this fiscal year. We've worked hard to improve both the quality and the quantity of our programs. And as you can see from the numbers, our librarians' hard work has paid off, and we've seen a significant increase in program attendance of over 47% this fiscal year. Our free computers continue to be an important resource in our community. We have many residents who don't have computers or internet service at home. They come to the library to stay in touch with friends and family, to do job searching, to apply for government assistance, and also to stay current with what's going on in the world around them. Our in-house visits are up by 1%. We know this number is underreported. We had malfunctioning gates. The gates are not only our security system, but they also count visitors. And we had malfunctioning gates at our express library and at our main library this year. We think we have finally resolved all those issues, and we look forward to having accurate numbers in the future, but at this time, we do show an increase of 1%. And then finally, our circulation is up 1%. And I know this doesn't seem like something to shout about, but in November, we attended a meeting of Valley Libraries. And we're the only library system that has currently seen any increase in circulation. Of the libraries that were there, the county, Glendale, Mesa, Phoenix, and Scottsdale, they saw an average decline of 16% over the course of the last couple of years, since 2011. So we are the only system seeing an increase. And I am going to credit my staff for continuing to be very creative and innovative in trying to improve library service. I think that is being reflected in how Mesa libraries are being used compared to other libraries.
Mr. Luna.
Heather, is that a result because of your digital product, now that you can download on your tablets and those kind of devices?
Actually, I wish I could say that, but we all participate in the Greater Phoenix Digital Consortium, so they have the same products. They also have Freegal. We're one of the few libraries that have Hoopla, but they have a lot of similar products. So again, I am going to credit my staff. Thank you.
What is Hoopla?
Oh, what is Hoopla? Okay. Hoopla is wonderful. Hoopla is a way to download or stream media. You can do whole albums, music albums. It's the entire Sony catalog. And then, we also have movies on Hoopla. My children use it because it's free. We used to use Netflix. We use this instead.
So you're eligible to use Hoopla if you have a library card?
Exactly. And you don't have to come into the library, you can do it all from home. And like I said, you can download or stream. So, if you're traveling, it's a great tool for sitting on those planes, sitting on the beach.
I think a lot of people just switched from watching us on Channel 11 to Hoopla.
It's under the tab Downloadables on the website. So, that gets me to our innovations for fiscal year 1415. And this year, we asked ourselves three questions. How can we reduce or eliminate barriers to library use? How can we make what we do fun and memorable? And who are the people or groups that we connect with, and what can we do for them specifically? So to reduce barriers, we implemented two innovations this fiscal year. The first is auto renewal, which is exactly what it sounds like. Now, when you get a pre-overdue notice to your email or your phone text, it will tell you that your items are due for being returned. We do it three days before the return date. And if they're eligible for renewal, it will automatically renew from the time it was due. So you get the full benefit of the entire loan period, plus you get the next loan period. So, the only time it doesn't renew is if somebody has a hold on it, or if you've used up all four of your renewals. So, we've had it just a short time. We implemented it in March. We've already had one patron who came in. Actually, it was the daughter of a library user. Her mother had been hospitalized and was very worried because she had library materials at home, and she was very concerned that they were overdue. The daughter brought him in to return. Her account was in good standing, everything had automatically renewed, and she was so excited that she was going to have good news to share with her mother, who had been so worried about this. So it's a great service. It saves our customers time, and it allows them the full benefit of the loan period. The other thing that we have done is we have finally, after much work, been able to allow customers to renew their library card online. Your card expires once a year, and now you can renew it online. You don't have to come into the library in person. That was probably our number-one complaint, and so we're very excited that we were able to remove that obstacle to library use this year. The Mesa Public Library Love City of Mesa campaign is how we answered the, how do we make the library fun and memorable? We realized that many new and existing City of Mesa employees don't know all of the library's resources, like Hoopla. And if they did know, they often were unsure of whether they could get a free library card, based on where they lived, whether the city they lived in or the county that they resided in. So we took it, took the campaign on the road. We visited city department meetings, city building lobbies. We attended IT2U sessions where we trained on library services and products. And we really tried to get the word out to City of Mesa employees what the library can do for them, and then what additional benefits as City of Mesa employees they have, such as our direct delivery service. So on the screen, you can see some of the statistics from that campaign. During that time, we renewed or issued over 744 library cards to city employees. 500 items, 515 items have been delivered to city employees since September. And we had 50 attendees at the IT2U sessions, which were separate from the meetings that we attended. So, we think that the city employees really responded. We were very glad to let them know what benefit they have free to them as employees. And I can't leave this slide without thanking IT. And very big thank you to Mail Services, because they're the ones who deliver those books to people. So those two departments really partnered with us and helped us make that campaign a huge success, and we appreciate their help. And then finally, I have a quote here from an employee. "When I saw the Inside Mesa item, offering city employees library cards via inter-office mail, and reading about all the online services you've added since I last had a library card years ago, I asked for one. Thanks so much. I look forward to making use of these new-to-me services." So right there, that encapsulated exactly the person we were going for, and so we were very happy that it was such a success. The last question we asked ourselves was, who are the people and groups we can connect with, and what can we offer them specifically? And Tablet Time is a great example of how we focused on a specific group to offer a service that is unique to the library. Tablet Time started as a grant application to the state library. However, they were so impressed with the concept that they have taken it on as a pilot project, and they will be using this as a model for a program that they want to roll out to public libraries across the state. The state library purchased all the iPads, the early literacy apps, and all the related equipment. So the only investment that Mesa has is staff time in developing and administering the sessions. During each session, parents or caregivers receive instruction on the featured early literacy lap, app, sorry, and a demonstration on how to use it effectively with their children. And then they're given time to work on an iPad, and together with their child, use the app there in the room with the instructor available to help. After they've had time to practice with it, then they come back together as a group, and they share what they've learned about using the app with each other. And so, as parents, they're helping each other do a better job. The program is based on the Every Child Ready to Read model, which was developed by the Public Library Association and the Association for Library Services to Children. And the need for children to develop early literacy skills is especially acute in Arizona, where according to the National Assessment of Educational Progress, the percentage of students who performed at or above the basic level in reading was 60% in 2013, and that is seven percentage points less than the national average. The program also provides opportunities for using tablets to low-income children who may not otherwise have access to these devices. According to the Common Sense Media Survey, 54% of higher-income children use educational content on mobile devices, but only 28% of lower-income children do.
Heather, quick question about Tablet Time. It says potential for 1,480 participants.
Yes.
And are we going to maximize that?
Yes. So far, we have room for 20 parents or caregivers and 20 children, so 40 participants each session. And so far, every session has been fully booked. So, we are going to reach that number by the end of the program, which will be ending in May.
Great. Thank you.
All right. In 2014, I was lucky enough to hear a presentation by Dan Heath, who along with his brother Chip, wrote Switch: How to Change When Change Is Hard. And one of my takeaways was to take bright spots and copy that success. So that is what we want to do next fiscal year, take our points of pride and figure out how to build on that success or duplicate that success. And Mel, the Mesa Express Library, is definitely one of our bright spots. As we are getting ready to celebrate its fourth anniversary in May, it is important for us to look at ways to improve on that service so that we can continue to provide great library service to our southeast Mesa residents. And the numbers on the slide provide a quick look at how Mel has grown in just four years. We're serving a lot of people out there. For those of you who were here in 2011, you may remember that Mel was started as an express library, and we did not offer all the programs and services of a traditional full-service branch library. However, in 2013, we received a number of requests to start offering storytime out at the express library. And so in August 2013, we had our first storytime, and we had three attendees. Now, the PlaySpot program at Mel is so popular that we have 75 to 90 attendees at each program. So we don't violate fire code, and I know they're sitting behind me. We actually have partnered with the mall management, and they allow us to use a vacant space to hold those storytimes, which is wonderful, but it means something related to the library is happening outside of the library, and we need to find ways to start making those things happen inside the space.
Mr. Luna.
Heather, remind me where the express libraries are located?
We just have the one.
Okay.
And the Mesa Express Library is located at the Power Square Mall, so Power Road and Baseline in what used to be, most people remembered as the Via Factory outlet.
Okay. And you're still getting consistent traffic there?
Yes, absolutely. The numbers keep growing.
Okay. Excellent.
So.
Heather, quick question. It seems like we have a few unoccupied businesses, buildings around town, including mall locations. I wonder if, I've heard in other communities, sometimes they out, there's an outreach program where you go to an abandoned building, not necessarily an abandoned building, but an unleased building or an unleased space, and it just is a temporary use. And you bring something like a temporary library. I mean, I know funding is, if you had all the money in the world, we could do this, but would it be an expensive program to expand Mel just a little bit and have a temporary, you know, paratroop into an empty space for four or five months while it's being, maybe, you know, fortunately, there's a lot of space that I got to sit for a year or two. It seems like it might be a fun idea to have some temporary uses and where we go in and occupy chronically unoccupied buildings, and we could get it for little or nothing, I would think.
I think you're talking about pop-up libraries, so...
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
See, you didn't even know you knew what it was.
Well, I knew, I knew the idea. This is not an idea original to me, obviously, but I mean, this...
The one thing about Mel is it is separate from our operating budget. The library is using used book sale revenue in order to fund the lease payments and some of the utility payments and those sorts of things. So the staffing and the collection do come from our budget, but the other monies are coming from the used book sales. So we were trying to create an opportunity to open a fourth location and keep it budget-neutral. And so, our volunteer coordinators, who you got to meet at our volunteer appreciation dinner, are doing a fantastic job selling those used books online and in the libraries. At this point, that's probably where the money would need to come from.
And that's a great program. I know your budget is under a lot of pressure, even you're being asked to reduce, but you still find ways to generate money by selling off used books and probably having bake sales and doing everything else you can. So, kudos to you guys for doing that.
Well, thank you. And then, another bright spot is ThinkSpot. Again, the community is responding very positively to this unique space that is part Makerspace, Collaborative Workspace, and Studio. This year, we wanted to build and expand our services within the space, and we added a second librarian to the staff in order to provide still more programs and outreach. And some highlights from this year, we launched our Starting Your Business series, in which presenters give talks and facilitate discussions on small business startup topics, such as, are you ready to start your own business? Of course, we also have the Code Club out there, and if you come by on Wednesday from 4:00 to 5:00, you'll see some very enthusiastic kids. We usually have between 15 and 25 kids learning how to code. And then, in March, I'm very excited, council member Luna helped us partner with Mesa Public Schools and the Mesa Arts Center in order to host a world-famous cellist, Zul Bailey, at our space. He played, and if you have a chance to watch the video, the music is beautiful. And then he talked, and his message is very inspirational, too, so it was a great time for the kids. We had students from Red Mountain High School Orchestra there, 25 there in the room. And then, the whole event was also video conference live and shared with Fremont Junior High and Westwood High. So it was a great way to talk about STEAM, not just science, technology, engineering, and math, but also bring in that arts element that is so important for our students to succeed in the future. And finally, the space itself is used by students, small business owners and residents, just as we had hoped. Some examples of how people use the space, we have students who practice guitar in the studio. We had high school students creating their video prom-esque special occasion videos in the space. We have entrepreneurs who meet with clients, who create prototypes on the 3D printer. They also use the studio to film commercials for their websites. And we have a very active amateur ham radio club that meets there weekly. So we have lots of different uses in the space, and that's exactly what it was designed for. And over the next year, we want to find ways to grow ThinkSpot, and really, our goal next is to figure out how to bring it downtown. The community down here could really use those sorts of resources. The students locally here don't have exposure to those things, and we want to make sure that they also have those opportunities. And then, our third highlight for next year of what we want to accomplish is, we would like to finish our Dobson update. Dobson will be 28 years old in June, and since it was opened, the way that space is used has changed significantly. And so, in 2012, we conducted a community survey to see how people wanted to use the space. And so in 2012, we conducted a community survey to see how people wanted to use the space. We developed a master plan, and then we have slowly but surely begun changing the space in accordance with that plan. This three-year project will be completed at the end of 2015. Phase two is in progress. The butterfly garden was completed this week, and the glass walls for the children's room that will help define the space and reduce the noise will be installed this week. The new furniture for the children's area is on order, and we are very excited because it will not only coordinate with our Northern Arizona Woods theme that we have in the space. If you come to the space, you'll see there's an incredible custom mural on the wall, but the furniture is designed to facilitate the five early literacy skills of talking, writing, reading, playing, and singing. So we're very excited to have that in progress. And so the final piece of phase two is the meeting room and the two individual study rooms. Those will be installed in June, and so then at that point, we should be completed with phase two. And then phase three is basically rearranging the rest of the space and trying to change it to accommodate the requests of our community. Our adult readers are looking for more quiet leisure reading spaces. They don't want to use tables so much anymore. They want to have individual chairs. And our teens are looking for a place where they can be more collaborative and talk and work together. So we'll be shifting spaces so that those two conflicting requests will still work in a fairly small space. And then we're also going to be incorporating more counters for those people who use laptops because that is a very high use in that particular location. So now we get to talk budget. Fiscal year 1516, our proposed budget was just over $7 million, and the library was asked to find 3% or a little more than $214,000 in reductions. We had been internally freezing positions as they became vacant, so we were able to meet the target with four positions, two full-time, two part-time, that are all vacant.
Thank you, Heather. At the recent Library Volunteer Dinner, you gave some interesting statistics on the number of positions in the library. If you can compare with what you had before the downturn, what you have now, I think the public might really be amazed at what you've been able to do with so much fewer staff.
Okay. I actually have that sheet here. So our high point was fiscal year 2002, 2003, and we had 181.3 FTEs. In 2014, 15, this fiscal year, we have 78.7 FTEs, our full-time equivalents. I need to remember the people at home. So with these reductions, we will go down to 75.7 FTEs, which brings us back down to where we were in 2009 after the reduction in workforce. There will be a customer service impact of these reductions, and it's exactly what you would expect. There will be an increase in wait times for assistance in the library, and we have been experiencing an increase in wait times for assistance on the phone. We received a number of complaints in the fall of this year as we started holding those positions vacant. We think we have resolved that issue. Essentially, what happens is when staff are not on the desk in the public service areas, when they're in their cubicles, working at their desks, they answer phones. So we are still able to accommodate the phone volume that we are receiving in that way. The two part-time positions are library page positions. They are the ones who make sure that the materials are on the shelf and in the right order, and losing those two positions is a 7% decrease in the overall paging staff. So we are seeing an increase in the amount of time it takes to get materials on the shelf. However, we are working with performance excellence, and they are helping us to identify ways to make that process more streamlined and efficient and less touching of the materials in order to get them onto the shelf. So we hope to decrease that time. Bottom-line customer service is our priority, and as positions become vacant, we are filling the ones that are mission-critical, which right now are librarian positions. As you saw from the first slide, programming is a significant increase. We are filling a need in the community with our programming, and so we will be continuing to fill librarian positions. Other positions, we will be looking at very thoughtfully before deciding to fill those. And that's my presentation. Do you have any questions?
I have more of a, I guess, a statement. You know, during our last Audit and Finance Committee, I'd asked staff to look at how we can maybe take a different look and a different approach to how we budget. And I've been impressed so far with the presentations that staff has done, showing the savings that they're bringing to the city, being good stewards with the tax dollar. So one of the things that I'd like to do is try to develop a way that we can reward those departments going forward, where if they have those savings in place, that they can use them for projects that may not be, you know, a high priority. So if you're finding reductions or you're finding ways to save, maybe you can do the pop-up library at another location, or, you know, or even potentially bring from a vacancy, you know, hire an employee to help out, you know, something of that nature. So I'd love to hear from staff at some point in time, and I'd look forward to working with Chairman Glover on the Audit and Finance Committee to see if we can come up with something that would basically reward our departments for being good stewards.
Thank you.
Heather, thank you for the great job you're doing in the library. I appreciate the time you're spending to work with our young children, especially in the formative years, when they're learning how to read. That's the most critical time to work with our younger population in the community. So I appreciate that you're working with New Directions and with CLP and those several. So good job to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Richards?
Sure. I really appreciate the innovation that we're seeing, the move to digital content, the response to what millennials and other folks are looking for, and balancing that against our prime library users who are baby boomers that like to attend the library. My nine-year-old daughter attended the Code Club quite frequently and really enjoyed it. In fact, she became so enthused about it, she went out for her elementary school Lego Robotics team. So we'll find out if she makes that here in the next few weeks or so, but she's pretty excited about it. But that came from a program at our library, and it's really neat to see that enthusiasm for engineering and programming. And she's, she was one of, I don't know, three or four of the kids that actually came in with some programming skills, and it was because of that program. So that response to digital content, all the different innovations that are coming, you know, you wouldn't expect that. Libraries, people think books when it comes to libraries, but in Mesa, you cannot just think books. Our libraries are so much more, and I'm not sure library is the right term anymore for what you do. And, you know, it may be time to rethink how we, what we call our Digital Content Center or whatever it is, because libraries just really don't reflect the whole gamut of things that are going on in that location. And so, you know, you may have a little bit of a marketing challenge ahead of you to really describe everything that you guys are doing, and you're doing a great job with it. So I appreciate all that you guys have done. Thanks.
Thank you.
Heather, I'd just like to say amen to the kudos you've gotten so far. I think everybody ought to have to run for mayor because it requires you to stand in front of the library for several Saturdays, collecting petition signatures, and you realize what a needed resource the library is in our community. Like Dave was mentioning earlier, people think we're in a digital age, our libraries, you know, buggywhips at this point, but nothing could be further from the truth. So in particular, as we all know, there's some real funding challenges right now with education in our community. And Mesa's reputation has always been a city that placed a great deal of emphasis on education. And I've wondered if maybe the library, if the city, through the library program, you know, could be a, offer some assistance to the education challenge, funding challenges that we're experiencing by working closer with our school district to make sure that we don't do what they do, but that we do what we do in a way that complements the education situation in the community right now. So that's something I think we'll all be looking forward to and figuring out in the next few months. So thank you very much. Job well done. We appreciate your good work.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Fire and Medical. Welcome, Chief Beck.
Good morning, Mayor. Members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity this morning to bring to you our accomplishments and the things that we've been working on. And with me today are some fresh new faces, fresh new leaders for Mesa Fire and Medical. Some of you already know them, some of you have met them, but certainly they've really stepped up considerably this past year in making, actually, some amazing progress in some areas that haven't really been touched on other places. First, with me today is, my far left is John Lachlan. Chief Lachlan is in charge of our Deployment and Dispatch Center. Jason Taylor is the manager of our Emergency Transportation, essentially our contract for ambulances. He manages that on a day-to-day basis. We'll talk about that in a few minutes. Of course, Tara Acuna, you've met before, is our Management Services Director. And then Deputy Chief Steve Ward has stepped up and is, wears multiple hats, but the biggest hat and all-consuming hat he wears right now is he's the manager of the Medicare/Medicaid grant that we received this year. So we'll be giving you some updates from those various areas. To get started, we're going to cover our accomplishments from 1415. It's a, it's a short, concise list, but I think it's, it's a reflection of the kind of effort and work that's done within the Mesa Fire and Medical Department every, every day, from the administrative staff right on down and including, especially in many cases, our emergency responders on the street. Just a great, great attitude about the services that we provide, the level of service reflects that, the commendations we get from the public reflect that as well. So every year, we thank each other for that accomplishment. That's not something that we take lightly. Another thing I think that it's important to know is that some of the innovations that we've worked on and some of the things we've accomplished have been through really no increase in general fund costs, that they're being done on grant or reorganizing of the department to try to find, squeeze resources out of areas, combine some things, compress some duties, and to make some dollars available for us to continue with our innovations. The members here will absolutely describe some of those things for you. The other, I think, important item for you all is essentially how we're managing our emergency response system. We have about a 1% to 2% growth rate that we see fluctuate from year to year. This year started off with a big bang. We sort of projected it would be a little greater than that, but it's kind of leveled off. Our goal is to respond to our locations within five minutes, 90% of the time. So that's usually the target that we use, and we've been maintaining our ability to hit that target, oh, between 60, 65, and 70% of the time. So, and that's been pretty consistent over the years. So with all the other things that we're doing, including the growth rate, we've been able to really maintain the kind of response time, I think, that makes us a leading service provider with regard to Fire and Medical. To start off, a couple of accomplishments under this response time, you know, obviously the grant that we received is adding services to our system, it's putting responding units in there, and although we don't have the data, we know for sure that they are improving our overall response times citywide, because they're taking units that otherwise would be responding to those calls and allowing them to be available for higher priority types of calls. And so it just makes sense that if we look at the, in fact, it's the premise of this concept from the very beginning, is to try to send the right resource to the right call so that we can maintain our ability to respond to the most critical emergencies in the best possible response time. And so each of these areas, the grant, an answering point, a little technology in our dispatch center, and the certificate of necessity issue that we've been working for and what we've accomplished up to that point. So let me let Chief Ward take off and talk a little bit about implementation of the federal Medicare/Medicaid grant.
Good morning. So regarding the CMS grant demonstration portion of our Community Care Initiative, I'm very proud to report over the last year that, along with our partners, we have placed six response vehicles into the system. And those six response vehicles, I know we've talked a little bit about the details of those before with the nurse practitioners and licensed crisis counselors, they are providing the citizens of Mesa with a level of prehospital service and a level of care that is really second to none in the nation, and we're very proud of it. We're getting to the point now where our efficiencies are really improving, and we're making progress every day. We've already served thousands of customers that have requested services through our 911 system with these units, and we're doing a lot of work to track and make sure that things are going the way they are, because we, really, the purpose of this is to demonstrate and provide data and make sure that we can sustain this. We also continue to implement some of the supporting operations and some other things that we need to improve the efficiency, so we continue to do that into the next fiscal year, along with partnership with the grant CMS, things like nurse triage in the alarm room and centralized medical direction, which is really going to help us improve service and improve efficiencies. So in order to do this, we've had to really come up with some innovative infrastructure, especially in the information and data management. Along with help from City IT, we've created some really innovative ways to solve some of our problems. Some of our partnerships in the community have really blossomed, and our relationships with institutions that help take these patients and help us manage this stuff. And then, of course, some of the training we've done, you can imagine that bringing in with our private partnerships and the training that we've had to do and with the support of our staff, we've made a lot of progress with that, and it's working out really well. In fact, the infrastructure that we put into place to manage this has really garnered a lot of attention throughout the nation, and it really has become the envy of many of our departments throughout the nation, so we're very proud of that. So certainly with the support of this council and the city manager and Chief Beck, we are going to continue to innovate, we're going to continue to improve, and really what we're doing is defining our role in the healthcare system, and we're very excited going into the next year.
Chief Lachlan's going to describe some technology that we implemented that's really kind of streamlining our ability to select the appropriate resource for the appropriate type of call. And it's something that we've been working on for many years, and this year was an extra special year for us. I'll let John explain further.
First, I'm going to start off with a little bit of what a secondary P S A, or public safety answering point, really is. Real quick, all 911 calls nationwide, with very few exceptions, are answered by the local law enforcement agency, and they are considered the primary public safety answering point. As a second point of contact, we'd be considered the secondary public safety answering point. And sort of how the system works is if you call 911, the primary P S A, or public safety answering point, the law enforcement agency, they'll ask a few questions real quick and determine whether your call's fire, medical, hazardous materials, technical rescue, and if it's anything like that, they'll transfer the caller to us. This is really a very quick process, it only takes a few seconds. And here in Mesa, Mesa Regional Dispatch Center, we do receive those calls from Mesa PD, Gilbert PD, Apache Junction, Maricopa County Sheriff's, Penalt County Sheriff, and DPS. As Chief Beck mentioned, we were able to implement becoming a secondary P S A with no additional funding. That was due in large part to Maricopa Region 911, which is part of MAG, and they were able to fund the infrastructure necessary and the equipment necessary to be able to transfer all those calls from all the Maricopa Region P S A's to us and to our dispatchers to answer those calls. The greatest benefit to us becoming a secondary P S A is that we are better to able to talk to the callers and triage the calls, which gives us the opportunity to more efficiently, more effectively use all the response resources in the region, but especially those associated with the CMS grant and our community care units. And what we've done to best utilize this opportunity is we revised all of our questions that we ask the callers, all the call types that we use, and we've also revised all of our response plans to make sure we're getting the right resource and being most effective and efficient as we can to do what Steve and Chief Beck have already talked about, using the resources. So that's what we've done for over the last year, and we continue to refine those, and we evaluate those weekly and monthly to make sure we're becoming more fine-tuned and being as efficient as we can.
And I might add, one of the areas, I mean, obviously, this takes a tremendous amount of resource to implement these kinds of changes, and we have received, well, a little over, where's Tara? A little over four and a half... A little over $4.5 million from this particular grant, which is funding a lot of the additional staffing on national response units. But as a department, we absorbed a lot of the responsibility for the implementation of this. However, there is one position that they did offset. And so there's actually a savings going on here at a very low amount, but there's a savings there for one position. Otherwise, we would be having to fund as a responder in the field. So, and that person is Tony Loladuce, who is the grant writer, who is a Mesa firefighter, who is now the grant manager and interacts with Medicare and Medicaid on a weekly basis. We have weekly meetings with staff. Trust me, they are very particular about the types of data that they want collected. And I have to echo what both Steve and John have said about the support we received from IT staff. They really, I think, pretty clearly, because they're understaffed as well, they dropped everything, came over and helped us design and implement billing systems and all kinds of other support systems that collect the data that we need going forward. So thanks, John, for that report. Today, Jason Taylor's with us. As you know, managing emergency transportation is an ongoing effort and we have some exciting information for you that we've actually received just last week. So I'll let Jason cover some of that.
Good morning. As Chief said, the last accomplishment we'd like to share with you is our application for a certificate of necessity or a CON as we call it. A CON is basically a license from the state that allows us to provide ambulance service and also bill for certain medical services that we provide. The importance of the CON to the department is really that it allows us to adapt to the changes and uncertainties that we're seeing in emergency medical services these days. For example, a CON would really serve as a safety net by allowing us to step in and transport patients if our current contracted provider is unable to do so. It would also facilitate cost recovery and ultimately sustainability for alternatives to the traditional 911 responses that we're developing like the community paramedicine program that the CMS grant is pioneering right now. We don't have our CON yet, but we wanted to include our application as an accomplishment, largely because of the level of effort involved and also because Mesa is on the forefront of 10 Valley Fire Departments that have recently applied for CONs. So applying for these CONs is really a high priority in the fire service valley-wide right now. And we feel proud to be on the forefront of that. The application is, it's a pretty involved process. It involves proving to the state that there is a public need for our services and also that the department has the resources, expertise, and integrity to provide those services. It's been really a team effort and it's involved most of the fire divisions. It's also, we've relied on help from the Office of Management and Budget and the City Attorney's Office. So we really appreciate their help. It involves a significant amount of information gathering, financial forecasting, and back-and-forth discussions with the state. So they really, I don't want to say put you through the wringer, but it's an arduous process to prove that we need this thing. We began the process last fall, formally submitted the application just this past December. And actually, the good news that Chief mentioned is just this week, we received a notice from the state that they're proposing waiving the formal hearing for our application. So what that means is absent any objections from current other ambulance providers, we could see our, we could receive our CON application, or excuse me, we could receive our actual CON as early as next month. So that's what we're hoping for. On the other hand, if there are objections and we do go to hearing, the timeframe would be extended at least another 12 months, maybe 12 to 18 months. So we should know within the next three weeks which track will be on and we'll certainly keep the council posted on that.
Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh.
You know, occasionally, or not so occasionally, anymore more frequently, council members have been getting emails or texts from the fire and medical department saying that you're on altered protocols. And if you get a certificate of necessity, how does that impact a situation where you have an unaltered protocol? And for those in the audience, you might want to explain what altered protocol means and what its impact is on service delivery.
Sure. Sure. In response to your first question, altered protocols is basically, it's a method of rationing ambulances. So if there's a shortage of ambulances, and that can be for various reasons, sometimes our current provider, Southwest Ambulance, has staffing issues, but sometimes there's high call volumes or mass casualty events, what we do is we start to only automatically send ambulances. And this is managed by dispatch and deployment, Chief Lachlan's group. We only send those ambulances for the more serious calls such as the strokes, the drowns, the codes. And then we require our company officers in the field to request an ambulance when they're ready after they've already triaged the patient. And so what the CON would do is when we would be on altered protocols and ration those ambulances, it would allow us to staff some of our TRV apparatus with some of our members, whether it be on overtime or maybe taking them off of some of our trucks temporarily. And then we could then kind of fill that gap in the system temporarily and transport patients and more importantly, not get in trouble with the state for doing that and also be able to recover our costs for doing that.
So ultimately, if you're granted the certificate of need, you're really tremendously enhancing the value of our service to the public and improving their chances of surviving a serious incident where there is a shortage of ambulances. You can kind of fill the gap and if the person needs transport, the difference in time by being able to transport them may make the difference in that person surviving the event. Am I right?
John, you want to follow up on that?
Yeah, I think that's accurate, say, Councilmember Kavanaugh. And to back up what Jason was saying is that we do ration those resources when we're on altered protocols and this does give us the ability to staff our apparatus with members and make sure that we do get to the most critical calls a little quicker if there is a shortage of ambulances from the private provider.
Thank you. That's something that we've talked about-
I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson, add a question.
Sorry. On the, when you go to an altered protocol, do the TRVs, so the staffing that's already on the TRV couldn't adequately transport then? Is that what we're saying?
Councilmember Thompson, we, the licensing to do emergency transport in the state of Arizona requires this certificate from the state. One of the things that they do under providing the certificate is inspect your vehicles, inspect your processes, inspect your treatment protocols. And on that basis, along with a lot of other things, they will authorize your ability to do that. If we simply take that process over without that sort of evaluation, there is a question about whether or not we are qualified for that, believe it or not.
I was talking about after, if and after we have the CON in place, because he said that a comment was made that we'd either pull people off of other trucks or bring people in on overtime to help transport. And I was wondering if the current makeup of the TRV couldn't transport?
Yes, the current makeup of the TRV at this point is, certainly it has the physical equipment to do the transport. But if we take one of those out of our system, then we reduce our ability to respond to the emergency medical component. And so that's how come we actually contract with a private provider and not do it ourselves is because we really don't have the resources in-house at this time to be able to do that. Now, can they double time? Of course. In fact, even our fire trucks are authorized to transport if there's extended delay for an ambulance and they feel they have a critical patient and they're within reasonable access to a appropriate hospital, we can actually put them in the fire truck and transport. And no one has a problem with that. But in terms of an ongoing model, it's something we'd have to look at because clearly it would be dependent upon how many of those community care units we have in the system. There are models around the country actually where there is a unit in every single fire station that is designed to do transportation, where they have agreed to do that in-house. So there are some variations on the theme of just having, you know, dedicated two people to an ambulance-style unit that it's all they do. But in a system the size of ours, what you find is, and we're doing 40,000, 30,000, 40,000 transports a year, we're trying to bring that down. But it's no small task to just begin to provide that level of service with a handful of two-person units. Okay. Thank you, Jason. Good job. Some points of pride moving on, and again, without being repetitive, clearly moving to, moving towards the construction of our new communications and dispatch center as the Mesa Fire and Medical Regional Dispatch Center and ELC is a huge part of this equation. It's a front-end cost that will not only improve the dependability of our dispatch services and communication services, but it will also allow us to really maximize the cost effectiveness and improve the efficiencies over the years while, in that we will have our own ability and we'll have the space to provide that ability where we can actually triage caller, patients that call in 911. And as had been mentioned, we will have, we're already in the process of implementing a nurse triage system. That provides a full range of possible solutions for a caller's problem. Of course, we will rule out a true emergency-level patient right from the very beginning. And once we have done that, and if that is the case, that we can transfer this patient if they qualify under our new protocol or under our new guidelines, is they would go to nurse triage. And the nurse would coach them through remedies at home, maybe help them contact a primary care physician if they don't have one, maybe it's a behavioral health issue. As you know, through 911 nowadays, we're getting calls for all kinds of things. And one of the trends we see is for not necessarily acute behavioral situations, but people that simply want someone to talk to. They're lonely, they call. And so right now, we tie up one of our emergency dispatchers to support that person and take care of their needs and we're happy to do that. But you can see how inefficient that becomes. So that communication center will allow that sort of thing to occur. Also, as Steve mentioned, with the medical direction, help me with that, Steve.
Centralized medical.
Centralized medical control. That will allow us to have access to a, essentially an emergency doctor 24/7 for virtually anything that we need, special orders from in our system to take care of a patient or even to take care of one of our own members or anybody else that we would forward to this doctor for a review and assessment. So, and so there'd be a very short turnaround time, they'll be on the telephone. We're looking at using this facility for telemedicine in the future. Clearly, that's the direction that a lot of this is going. There are unbelievable efficiencies for telemedicine in this as well. But unless you have the ability to coordinate that through some center that understands medical issues, understands what the resources are that are available and can expedite that contact. So it's so much more than just a new facility. It creates a capability for us to maximize the efficiencies, improve the service levels, and be able to take advantage of that process well into the future. So it's a point of pride for us to, and I have to tell you, I really have to thank council for having the, because you know, when you're early on in something, it's very difficult to communicate all the detail, especially when there's pressure to make decisions. And we, I think we did a very good job of doing that, but I also know, council, there was a slight leap of faith there for us to get in, to go in this direction. And what I'm trying to demonstrate for you now is that this will pay off big time for us. Thank you for your vision and your support in this process. And you know, the sooner we can get moving on this thing, the better. Because every day that goes by is another day where we can't maximize these efficiencies. So thank you for that. Another point of pride for us, we talk about regional communications. As you know, for years now, Mesa Fire and Medical has been deeply involved in a process with city communications to try to link the two public safety communication systems, the emergency communication radio systems between essentially the East Valley region and the Phoenix region, which includes West Phoenix. That matches an unbelievable vision, if you will, put forth not only by the region itself, but also now reinforced by the federal government. As you know, D-Block banned for communication signaling and carrying of not only voice information, voice traffic, but also data over these systems can be made available to first responders and virtually anybody else that has contact with the system. Until we can actually bring those things together, we won't be able to use them on a consistent basis and won't be able to maximize that. One of the things coming out in the process now is as this process rolls out, there are going to be obviously sizable federal grants to make this happen because it really is a national model that we're a part of here. So organizing ourselves under a regional authority where we have the ability to operate, I say "we" because I do mean that "we," but the authority is a specific entity that we empower to operate in our behalf and negotiate these opportunities for grants and a lot of other partnerships and things along the way that can help offset the costs, but also improve the consistency of the communication. And then where we have our most personal interest in this is that inconsistent communications leads to confusion during emergencies, which can lead to danger for our first responders and ultimately increases potentially the danger for the people that we're trying to serve. So having this thing united and having it being consistent and managed as a single entity where it's not pulled and dragged in different directions based on the day of the week or the current times of, and all those kinds of things, that something that can be stable and in place will really improve the overall safety in the operations that we provide. So that's something that's moving along. I expect within the next year that a joint board meeting of the regional wireless network, wireless cooperative in the Phoenix and the West Valley region, and the TOPAS group here in the East Valley, which we lead, coming together with all the communities involved. It's like a MAG meeting when you go there. Okay? It's, there's huge participation in this. And we're right on the precipice of having the approval to begin to implement this. And it's been years' worth of analysis and deep work leading up to dealing with all the intricacies of how this governing board will interact with other communities and where assets are shared and assets are in play and dollars. And you know, and obviously I'm passionate about the output side of the equation, but there are people that are even more passionate than I am about the dollars and cents. And that's a good thing because when we do this, we want to do it right. So we're very close to that and I think that's a fantastic accomplishment for the region. And I know that you all have actively supported that up to this process, up to this point. And I know I can depend on that going forward. And then continuing to provide advanced services through the models of the grant. I mentioned the nurse triage, I mentioned the centralized medical control and the refined billing. I just, one little key point on that, it's amazing to be a part of a process that's really giving birth to something for the very first time. Steve and his staff are actually inventing the billing codes for the services that we provide in our emergency service arena that are eligible for reimbursement from Medicaid. And as you know, hospitals, the federal government has mandated this coding system for collecting from Medicaid for years, and they've struggled with it. We are the first ones in the country to have the opportunity, I should say. We didn't see this one coming. So this is, this is something I want to emphasize with you, that it's a tremendous amount of internal work going on. Again, with the same staff we had before we had the grant in terms of the support staff. There's nobody new there. We have just realigned some things and made it the top priority and we're moving forward. So that's exciting and that's a point of pride for us as well, is that we, you know, from my personal perspective, I don't know how we ended up in this position as such a focal point for this process throughout the country. That's the good news. The bad news is, is the expectations are really high and the pressure from the responsibility is right up there with it. So, but again, none of this would be possible without your support and your patience. So thanks for that. The next phase, we're going to get right into the numbers. Tara's going to cover with you what our experience is going to be here over the next year.
Thank you, Chief. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Originally Mesa Fire Medical proposed 17 reductions and three new revenue sources totaling $3 million, from which various reductions in revenue and, I mean, various reductions in all of the revenue were selected. After, as you know, after the PSPRS phase-in was confirmed, we got to about $1.7 million just over. Our reductions include reduced assignment flexibility. The Mesa Fire and Medical Department likes to utilize our- The Mesa Fire and Medical Department likes to utilize our staff's skills in the office. We like to bring them in on short-term special assignments. Not only is this good for succession planning, it's great to see what skills they actually have. However, it does, we do have to backfill for minimum staffing, and it does cause overtime. So we're going to reduce the assignment flexibility. We also have two vacant positions that are going to be deleted. The first one is a civilian position, fire and life safety specialist in the PIO's office. Some of the duties that went along with that position were outreach to our social media as well as recruitment, so we're going to have to kind of reorganize and give those duties to some other people. Additionally, there's a sworn assistant chief. He'll be retiring at the end of the year. So with him leaving, we're going to upgrade one position to an emergency management coordinator. Another assistant chief will take on the duties of emergency manager, and the rest of the duties will be disseminated to other staff. That's $306,000, just over. We've also been able to look at our small vehicle replacement schedule and spread that out a little bit for ongoing savings of $50,000 a year. And we've applied for a grant for savings for hotspots. Currently, all of our apparatus have, I mean, savings for air cards. Currently, all apparatus have three air cards on them to run the electronic patient care records along with the portable laptop. If we can get hotspots on each of the trucks, that'll eliminate three air card charges. The first year in the grant savings would be $12,500, and ongoing, that's just under $40,000 a year. We've also have $200,000 in reduction in fuel costs, and that's not only based on the trend of the downward trend in the pricing, but also, as Steve mentioned, we have six response vehicles that are responding to the low acuity calls, which in turn mitigates the consumption of the large diesel vehicles. And finally, you probably saw on previous presentations, we originally had three engineers on our reductions, but we've worked with city manager's office and office of management and budget to come up with some, what we're calling managing our resources. We're going to be taking reductions in temp services, travel and training, tuition reimbursement, and also continuing with our parts reuse, and that's going to be just over $300,000. We also have three revenue, new revenue streams that we'll be bringing in. The first one is charging for select EMS services, and as everybody's discussed, and as the ordinance that was adopted not too long ago, we'll be able to cost-recover some of our emergency medical services. And we have a couple of models we're working on currently that we hope to implement next year. We also have a regional dispatch fee increase, and that's, all of our partners are aware of that, and that'll start on July 1st, and that'll bring in $80,000 additional a year. And also increase in fees and charges in our inspections area. It was a nominal increase in the fees, actually, a 2% on our inspections. The bigger amount of the revenue is, our model has changed based on some benchmarking studies, and we plan to bring in about $500,000 extra per year.
And just in closing, it's occurred to me that I've skipped over one of the items, and if you'll, I beg your pardon to allow me to just-
You bet.
-get a little bit more information on that. It has to do with managing our training and our staffing models. Many of you, or a couple of you anyway, may have been on council way back when the quality of life tax was approved by the voters. And as a result of that, there was quite a bit of emphasis put on improving public safety as well as other key areas of the city. In the last 10 years, essentially since that, we have only added one additional emergency response unit in the system. Now, we've replaced stations, and we've actually built new stations, but we have used existing resources to staff those stations, with the exception of Station 220, the last station that we had. And it was through council action that we were able to actually make that happen as well, because there really wasn't dollars identified in the general fund to pay for that. So with work with the city manager's office and with the council, there was a way that was worked out where we were able to free up some dollars in general fund to actually staff those positions. The reason I preface this present, this part of the presentation with that comment is that through the years now, and way back, I hate to go back too far, but we were really in the very serious reduction times, we have been, we were reduced several million dollars in our overtime. And one of the main reasons that we wanted to support that is because we hadn't really touched in, on a different model for training our troops, which would allow them to stay in their stations and to stay available for calls, which would alleviate the needs for us to hire back additional people for units that could essentially plug the holes in the deployment system while we had to pull some people out for training, because as you know, our people have permanent, full-time emergency response assignments for 24 hours when they're on duty. So when we take somebody out of that position for training or for any other reason, we are creating a hole in our deployment system. And of course, that system's designed to provide for response times that are very key to survival as well as saving property. So we've sort of been through that exercise, we actually pulled it off. It's actually working very well. What we did essentially is we took it out of the training academy, we gave it to our first responders, especially our battalion chiefs and shift commanders, and said, "Here are the menu of things that need to be trained on, develop a system to do that, use technology." We use computer-based training as well as teleconferencing, but we still have a lot of classroom things. So those people are now actually driving to the stations and provide that training, and they're doing it in addition to their other duties. We didn't hire any additional training staff to do this, not a single position. So it's been ongoing now for several years. We're very proud of the fact that we were able to implement this whole new system and be much more efficient, and quite frankly, I think, improve the training, because when you have a variety of instructors, especially people who have an interest in a particular aspect, they're going to be much more enthusiastic in the training. That goes to the student, who their attention and their awareness goes up. We're to a point now with that training that we really need to begin to do more drilling than we do video conferencing or computer-based training. We need to have the time to get out and actually execute some of the skills in a managed way. So we're kind of up against that, but again, probably this is good for this to be last, because this gives me an opportunity to really thank the operations staff, the responders, who have picked up on this change as well as the other changes we've talked about. We have been in a massive rush of change and innovation and retraining and new training and new devices for the last several years, and the performance from our firefighters has been absolutely spectacular. So, and I, there's no question in my mind, I know that you guys agree with that. So that's it for our presentation. If you have any other questions, we'd like to answer them for you.
Thank you. I think you covered it. And as you know, Chief, we're all very proud of everything you do, but particularly the TRV program, I think we, I brag about it, it seems like every day it comes up in a conversation with someone. So, and I want to make sure I get my vocabulary straight. Have we changed the name of those vehicles from TRV to CC, Community Care Response, or Community Care Vehicles?
That's correct. So we have two different vehicles, two iterations of that? One is the CCU, which is a community care unit, and that has the nurse practitioners and PAs on it. The other one is called CCS, which is a community care specialist unit, which has our licensed crisis counselors on there.
Oh, I see.
And we haven't so much changed as we have shifted in emphasis. We still have the TRVs.
Yeah.
They were designed to operate with two firefighters to go on basic life support types of calls. We still need them. Again, that's another, that's another option in the response model that we continue to explore. It's been done on an overtime basis, and so when we get short funds, we shut it down, and when we can manage it, we get it back going. So it's, we've been very flexible in trying to bring that around, but it stands for a transitional response vehicle, because we realized that we were in, we were evolving to a new model, and that this particular type of unit was going to be key to that. So apologize for the confusion. The other thing Steve didn't mention is, is that being involved on the national level with this sort of service change, community care units has evolved as a more consistent name on a national level. So we're still figuring out the language to, and we, the National Fire Service, the language to a whole new element of our service delivery, so we're having to come up with new vocabulary. So that's what that's about.
I get it, and if you're actually writing or getting Medicare codes created for what you're doing, that's pretty cutting-edge, that's a big deal. So going forward, I'll call them the CCUs, and I'm using the right vocabulary, right? Mr. Luna.
I just wanted to say you're also innovative. There's Cory Hayes back there. I wanted her to stand up. I appreciate the fact that they've created this reporting task force to assist many, many members of our community, not a whole lot of them, but there are some community members that that's an issue with. And they've created this task force to eliminate the red tape interdepartmental to assist some of our community members that struggle with that. And they've gone in my district, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate those efforts.
Good job, Cory. Great. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. I think the next item on our agenda is, we're down to approval of minutes from the executive session held March 19th to 26th and April 22nd. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That motion passes. Next item is information regarding job order contracting projects. Council, any questions?
No questions against the report.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to hear a report on meetings or conferences attended. Mr. Thompson.
I had the pleasure of attending the 106th Town Hall on transportation down in Tucson this week, and it's pretty interesting hearing everybody from across Arizona, from the urban as well as the rural Arizona, talk about their transportation needs. And everybody's transportation needs pretty much come down to the same thing. We all need it, but we can't pay for it. And so there was nothing startling that came from that, from the outcome, but you know, they are looking at different ways and opportunities to help to pay for infrastructure and transit. So it was pretty interesting. There should be a report coming out, probably in the next week or two, that'll surmise everything and then go out.
Great. Thank you for representing the city at that. I heard you, we were well represented, so thank you. Anything else? Council, Mr. Richards.
Sorry for being absent. On Monday, I had the opportunity and pleasure to be the grand marshal in the Superior Little League Parade, which took much precedence. I also got to throw out the first pitch. It was very exciting, which was a strike, by the way.
Oh, wait, wait. Did you go all the way up to the rubber?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
There you go, remember? Little League is 60 feet, 602.
The ball was still white. So also, we had an open house, a business located in River View. Mike Galloway, they do financial services for our public safety folks, started his, or expanded his firm to the River View area and has his offices located there, and he does a great job for those guys. And it's great to have a part of the district and have an opportunity to attend his open house and do a little ribbon-cutting with him. And then last night, we did the citizenship and the community mayor badge for about 40 Boy Scouts, 40 unruly Boy Scouts, but we had a great time. We had a mock city council meeting with them, and it seemed like they had a lot of fun. Thanks.
Sorry I missed that mock city council meeting. That would have been-
She's seen your replacement as the mayor.
Yeah, probably good I was not there.
He knew you, too, he says.
Yeah, ready to move up to the big leagues. All right. Next item is scheduling of meetings and general formation. Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder again, we have the vice mayor will be hosting his competition, surfing competition with the FlowRider this Saturday, and also there'll be free pancakes associated with this event. The event starts at 9:00 a.m., it goes till noon at Rose Junior High.
I will be there.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. If there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor, please say aye. Thank you. We are adjourned.